Good evening. The Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00 p.m. Next, public comment on closed session items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
Seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. So, we're going to adjourn. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Cindy Water, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participants, excuse me, participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Isidra Menzos and Francisco Mesa. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Buenas noches, y bienvenidos a la reunión de la junta del distrito escolar unificado de Napa Valley. Para acceder a la interpretación, en un momento aparecerá en la parte baja de su pantalla un icono de un globo terráqueo. Por favor, haga clic ahí, y después vaya a donde dice más, y elija Language Interpretation, Interpretación de idioma, y escoge español. En un teléfono móvil, busquen los tres puntitos que dicen more o más. Nuevamente, elijan Language Interpretation, Interpretación de idioma, y elija español. Muchas gracias. Thank you so much.
Can we please start with an attentive roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Student Board Member McGrath.
Present.
Student, trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Reiser.
Present.
Trustee Chu.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Present.
Trustee Hart.
Present.
Trustee Gonzales Maris.
Present.
All present. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD board meeting. E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Chu, do you have a report on closed session agenda items?
Um, I do. Report on Closed Session Items. For Agenda Item D1, Student Discipline, with respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to Ed. Code 35146 and 48912, Section 20, Government Code Section 49060 and 49078, and the Family Rights and Privacy Act, USC Section 1232G, under Student Matters. Item D1A, Expulsions. The board recommends the expulsion for student 01182024A.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. We've had a motion from trustee Gracia and a second from trustee Hart.
Trustee Water.
Yes.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Maris.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And one more item, D1B, Readmitted Expulsions. The board does not recommend for the readmission from expulsion for student 10132022A.
Okay, I will move to accept the board's recommendation to not readmit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from trustee Gracia and a second from trustee Hart. Roll call vote.
Trustee Water.
Yes.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Maris.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And that concludes the report on closed session items.
Okay, thank you, trustee Chu. Okay, and E2, we have the flag salute, and I would like to ask Principal Maria Cisneros to lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. Now, E4, Approval of Agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved by trustee Gracia, seconded by trustee Chu. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And E5, Approval of Minutes, December 14th, 2023, and trustees Gonzales Maris and Jankowicz, staying?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, and let's see, a motion by trustee Gracia and a second by trustee Hart, and let's see, so we can all vote? Is it a vote? All in favor? Sorry.
Aye.
Abstentions.
To abstentions, thank you very much. Okay, let's see, recognition, now we are on E6, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have any visitors in attendance?
Thank you very much, President Water. Tonight, we do not have any special guests or visitors in attendance.
Actually, all of you are special, I think. Because we are moving on to my favorite part of the agenda is recognition of Students of the Month. And Vintage High School, will Principal Hutchinson please present the Student of the Month for VHS, and that will be via Zoom.
It does not appear that Principal Hutchinson is online tonight, but we do have the student available.
Okay, so, well, that's too bad. We'll move on to Valley Oak High School.
We have the student available, so...
We have the student available.
Yeah, so, can we, we did see Principal Hutchinson's video at the last meeting, and the student was just not able to attend, so he is here tonight, online via Zoom, and he will go ahead and, do you want to speak, Xiaou?
Yes, if that's okay.
Welcome, and congratulations.
Thank you. Is my, is my mic okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin by thanking Dr. Masetti and the school board for recognizing me as one of, well, last month now, Students of the Month, and giving me the opportunity to speak here today. It is an honor to be given this award, and I am truly thankful for the gesture. My time at Vintage has been cultivated by a whole host of incredible teachers and staff, and it would be impossible to give them all the appreciation they deserve in this short address. Instead, I would like to highlight a few teachers and staff members that have been instrumental to my growth, both as a student and a person, over the last several years. Firstly, to Mr. Murkner, the teacher who ignited my passion for math. When we first met in my sophomore year, I was unsure how I would adjust to a higher level of math following a less intensive online curriculum. However, the learning environment that you fostered allowed me to discover the simplicity in complex topics and made for a memorable experience. When I was unable to take your AP Calculus class due to a scheduling conflict the next year, you continuously went out of your way to help me navigate a difficult calculus course at the college, and I couldn't be more grateful. Thank you for your willingness to continue teaching me even when I wasn't one of your students, and for showing me that math is easier than it seems. To Mr. Title, the hardest grader yet the best teacher I know. When I was placed in your honors English line class my freshman year, I was warned that it would be my hardest class to date. And yes, while this was true, your emphasis on clarity and concision in our writing laid a foundation for success in future English courses and beyond. From the routine feedback on every single writing assignment, to the daily interactive Piredec presentations, we as students were constantly reminded of your commitment to helping us succeed. Thank you for all that you do. To Mr. Scolno, or Mari, as I have come to know you better. In the short time that you have been working in our activities office, you have helped me navigate the waters of high school in a way that makes me feel like we've known each other for years. Your unwavering ability to greet every person with a smile or hug, and to be a support system for so many students that need it, does not go unnoticed. I'm so thankful to have met you, and I look forward to many more conversations with our makeshifts recruiter awards. To Mrs. Johnson and our admin team, the ones who go above and beyond for us. Having known Mrs. Johnson since fifth grade, I have grown to appreciate her proactiveness in always checking in on her students to make sure they are supported both academically and mentally. For our admin team, their willingness to meet with us and accommodate our needs, often without scheduled appointments, speaks volumes about the extent to which our staff cares about its students. Lastly, to my loving family, thank you for always supporting me in school, showing up to my sports games, and putting up with me even when I get on all your nerves. None of what I would do would be possible without you all. As I look towards my future, pursuing a degree in business at a four-year university, I am thankful for all the support that the staff and teachers have provided me. I am eternally grateful for my experience at Vintage High School, and I am confident that the next generation of crushers is in good hands. Once again, thank you.
And thank you for making the time to, you know, come and speak to us. We missed you last month, and thank you for saying all those nice things about all the people who helped you at Vintage. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Valley Oak High School. Will Principal Cisneros please present the Students of the Month for VOHS?
Thank you, President Water, and good evening, board trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Cabinet. It's always, you know, as President Water says, it's always one of my favorite days. It started at seven o'clock this morning with Sanders Rowdy's Student of the Month, and I'm here tonight to present, actually, four amazing students, two from each of the sites, and so it's always, again, it is an honor to be here. Both programs continue to thrive and provide the services needed for all the students as they work towards completing their high school education and their planning for their next steps in life. So, you know, the students tonight are going to be sharing their goals and their aspirations with you, and I also have a couple of teachers for MBIS that are here with us this evening and their families. Osvaldo Gutierrez is our November Student of the Month from Valley Oak High School. He was not able to join us tonight, but he sends his regards and his thank you to the board and to the Napa Valley Education Foundation for this recognition, and he looks forward to sending a little note to you all to say thank you on his behalf. This is a young man that's, you know, he's just the kindest, courteous, young man that you could meet. He's on target to graduate, actually, in about a couple of weeks, and after looking at his transcript, boy, he really stepped it up when he came to Valley Oak and has done incredibly, incredibly well. His teachers share that although he's a bit shy, he really stands above and helps other students as needed, and engages in those conversations that are a little bit of a deeper thought and continuous conversations with the teachers. So, he, this year, again, he's worked, every pent semester, every grading period, he's always worked to get the maximum credit, and it's very unusual for that to happen, to get the maximum credit. So, I was very happy to see, see that for him, so I'm happy to celebrate with him on Monday. His mother also says thank you very much, and I look forward to celebrating and sharing and presenting him the award on campus, so thank you again on his behalf. But I do have Sean Jerry here. Sean, would you come up? You know, this young man, I think before he came to Valley Oak, I would get some emails from him, you know, it's like, so what's the process? How's it going? What do, you know, what do I do next? I'm like, we have orientation coming up, we look forward to meeting you and getting you situated, or if he had something that he needed an answer for, a quick email, and we were, you know, that's how, you know, how I met Sean is through, through, through email, so it's been an amazing journey also with him. You know, there is no question about you finishing. You're almost there also, right? The plan is, what, about two and a half weeks? He'll be finishing his career with us. He joined us last spring, in April, and from the moment he arrived on campus, his GPA just went to the top, and so we're very excited for you and, and what you do moving, moving forward. You know, he's just a friendly, polite young man that not only gives you that smile in the morning, but also asks you, how are you doing? And so, that always touches my heart when that happens, and so again, you know, him graduating from Valley Oak early, I know that he's got a lot, that he, a great future ahead, and so I can't wait to hear what you're gonna share with us tonight, because I know you're speaking from the heart tonight, right? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, Sean.
I just wanted to start off by thanking my dad and my grandma, who are here with me tonight, and my friends and the board for recognizing me and wanting to give me this award. I'd also like to thank a few teachers from Valley Oak who, who I believe have gone me to this point. Julie Lovey and Ms. Markle, I don't remember Ms. Markle's first name, but... I don't know, I always, like, faced a lot of challenges in school. I like, I always had a problem with not doing my work, and I always also had a problem with not being able to connect to my teachers. I think that's a problem that I had at Vintage, was, it was so big, it was so hard for me to really connect with a lot of my teachers, but with Valley Oak, it's so much smaller, and classes are so much smaller, I really can, like, get to know my teachers to the point where, you know, they can know me and stuff, and just makes it so much easier, and it makes me want to actually be able to come and do my work at school. And I'm just so appreciative of the way the school works and everybody who works there, and just what they've done for all of us. Yeah, I mean, that's like, kind of all I got.
I always say the best speeches are from the heart, right?
That's true.
All right, so tonight with me, with, you know, with Independent Studies, I do have both of the students are here, and I also wanted to recognize both of the teachers, Holly Guerensen and Mrs. and Jessica Farrell. They are both the nominators, they each nominated one student, and so I am going to start with our first student, from Ms. Holly Guerenser, this is Salvador Ruiz Zerna, would you come All right, so this evening, we are thrilled to recognize Salvador as our Student of the Month for November. I could get in, stuck, as we're in January right now. He is someone who has unwavering perseverance and diligent work ethic have set him, have set him apart. Salvador's commitment to academic excellence and personal growth is truly commendable. He approaches challenges with resilience, demonstrating a remarkable, remarkable ability to overcome obstacles and achieve success. His dedication to continuous improvement and pursuit of excellence has made him a role model for his peers. With such a strong foundation and high expectations, there's no doubt at all that you will continue to excel in whatever you choose to achieve, both academically and in your personal pursuits. So, congratulations on behalf of Ms. Guerenser and the MBIS team, and we are so proud of you and can't wait to see what the future holds for you.
Thank you for being here today with us. I would like to start by thanking my parents for letting me came to this country, and also my uncles, thank you for being flexible with me. I also want to thank Independent Studies for having me, accept, accept me, and my teacher, Ms. Guerenser, for helping me, providing me with resources to improve my, to improve academically. Three years ago, I arrived in this country, and I'm happy to be the first person in my family to graduate from high school, and I would like to say a few words in Spanish for my parents who are in Mexico. Le dios gracias a mi mama por haberme dejado venir a este país y por haberme podido graduar de una escuela que es algo que en mi familia pues soy la única persona que se ha graduado de una high school y probablemente las siguientes personas son mis primos que hoy están aquí conmigo. También le quiero decir que gracias a mis tíos por ayudarme en todo y ser muy flexibles conmigo, este, hacer que todo esto sea posible para mí y ayudarme todo el tiempo. Le quiero también dar gracias a mi tía porque ella es la, ella es la persona que ha hecho que todo esto sea posible, gracias a mí, y gracias y recuerden mi nombre. Thank you.
All right, our next student, Vanessa Mello, she's actually going to be introduced by Jessica Farrell, her teacher, she nominated her, and she came all the way from St. Helena, she came back so she could be here to do the Student of the Month, so Ms. Farrell.
Okay, I get a little nervous coming up here. So, I just wanted to refer to my notes, so I don't forget anything really special about you. I really only had an opportunity to get to know Vanessa for a semester. She, she's actually brand new to MBIS, but also brand new to the state of California, came to us from Texas. So, she is an exceptional student, and I know that for her, you know, to change schools and change all of the things that she, she, you know, was used to, and then to also come to a program like Independent Studies, I recognize what a huge challenge, and, you know, how hard that must have been for her. So, when we had student-led conferences, we held these conferences in the fall, and I really just was blown away by her presentation. She just went above and beyond in this presentation, and I got to see all of the wonderful things that you did in, in your previous school. So, she participated in all activities in her previous school in all facets, so she was on academic teams, debate teams, athletic teams. She was heavily involved in FFA and agriculture, and so when she moved to her school, she had to shift her objective, and she shared with me in these conferences very, very specific goals, and she was very driven and told me that she intended to reach these goals by the end of the semester. So, when I reviewed them, she made every single one of those goals happen, and she's just really a driven person, and she's passionate, and she's wanting to become an educator also, so look out for her in a couple of years, because she is hoping to study special education, and in addition to that, she was an early grad, so she graduated in December, so that just, you know, demonstrates a little bit about her drive. In our program, we see many students come and go, and as I said, I haven't had her for very long, but she's just one of those people that you just wish you can hang on to, because she will excel in everything that she does. So, I would like to congratulate you, Vanessa, for persevering through all of your challenges and just being awesome. So, congratulations, so. I would like to start by thanking everyone in this room, especially my family and Ms. Farrell, for the endless support they have shown me. Before, as she has mentioned, I have been involved in a lot of things by attending many AP classes and extracurricular activities there was to offer, while also maintaining my straight A's. But when I came here, I was challenged in a welcoming environment that made me the best version of myself that I could be. MBIS has not only taught me meaningful lessons, but has prepared me for a successful future along the way. I am now ready to attend Napa College to earn a degree in education for special needs kids. Independent Studies has had a huge impact on me for the better that I will always forever carry with me. Thank you for your time and have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you, President Water, and thank you for the presentations. We want to distribute certificates to the students that were awarded tonight, so we'll call them up one by one, and then we'll allow some time for photos before we proceed with the rest of the business meeting. So, let's start out with the first student that was honored. Sean, would you like to come up, Sean Jerry, for a photo and certificate? Come on up.
Well, that was fun. Congratulations to all the students and their families.
Thank you.
G, Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Trustee Chu, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Masetti, did we, do we have any, any people online who want to comment?
Oh, Mr. Michaels, do we have any comments from anyone online?
There are no public comments on non-agenda items.
Okay, so, that's great. All righty. Okay, now for reports. H, Reports, Board of Education and Student Board Representatives. Why don't we start with our student representative?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a happy holiday season. This past Monday, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, I dedicated my time to volunteering at Justin Sienna with Teens Connect, a local nonprofit organization for teen mental health advocacy. We had our Teens Connect table set up alongside other local nonprofits, and we talked to community members who attended the event about what Teens Connected, Teens Connect and Mentis does in our community. Last Thursday, January 11th, I participated in learning walks at American Canyon High School alongside administrators and fellow students. It was a great experience, and I just wanted to share about one interaction that stood out to me. In the first math class that I went to, I interviewed a student who only spoke Spanish. I asked him the same questions that I would ask everyone else, only his answers differed from all the other ones that I received. Speaking only Spanish, he said that he never really knows what's going on, with the textbook and teacher instructions both being purely in English. This stuck out to me as a massive area for improvement with our accessibility for multilingual learners. I talked to Dr. Answorth about what we do at Napa High School to solve this issue, and he told me about how our multilingual students rely on their ELD math lab and student tutors to keep up with their English and math abilities. I know the solution to this problem, problem isn't instantaneous, but my hope is that in the future, we have more bilingual teachers and specialized classes so that none of our students have to sit in class unable to understand the lessons. From time to time, I watch the board meetings from last year, just the student rep report to see how I'm doing and get inspiration from Sam. And what Sam did last year after MLK Day was he shared a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. about his belief in education and its transformative power in fostering understanding in our youth. As I listened to Sam talk, I reflected on the work that we do here and the effort that you all put into your jobs, because ultimately- So that is a sad note, but I will say I'm proud of our district for the steps that we've taken, both to address the mental health and wellness of our students and larger community and also specifically the steps that we've taken to educate our community about the now city-required safe storage of firearms. But I will challenge us as an organization to look for ways that we can have even a larger impact for this public health crisis because I think that there's even more that we can do to educate people about and to prevent further gun violence. So on that note, I will conclude my report.
Thank you trustee Reiser. All right, well, on December 15th, trustee Reiser and I went to the Carpenter's Lunch in San Francisco, right, where we had a nice lunch, but we also met quite a lot of people who can help our students in career and technical education. So I was really happy we went. And let's see, on the 7th, January 7th, I went to the DeYoung Museum to see one of our teachers, our art teachers, Belair Terry Charney had a painting at the big, at the big, you know, Bay Area County Artists Exhibition. Yes, your sister, she had a painting there too and one of Terry's pictures was selected to be a postcard. It was, you know, it's a big deal. So that was great and I saw a couple of other friends of mine who had, whose pictures were chosen, people in San Francisco. And then also on the 8th, I attended the, I went to the Phase Two, you know, readiness and I've filled out a million online services, surveys lately and let's see, on, I believe it was on the 10th also, yep, the staff engagement that was online event that I, thank you, that was great. On the 9th, I attended in person the NCOE meeting. On the 14th, I met some local environmentalists and told them about, we discussed the reduction of plastic in the lunches, thank you, you know, for the effort there. Let's see, a couple of days before that, I went to see Mrs. Housley's Ethnic Studies class at Vintage High School, you know, very delightful group of ninth graders. The same day, I went to, Dr. David Brown, our former superintendent died and several of us went to the visitation at Tulakee and he was a great person and he was ahead of the curve in opposing book banning. I've got a story about that. He's, I'll always remember him, he was a big help to me. And on the 15th, I went to a meeting of our Students for Climate Action Group. On the 17th, which was only yesterday, I went to Sacramento again to the Governor's Budget Meeting. Yesterday, I met with Superintendent Misetti. Today, I went to Phillips Elementary, they had, they had a kickoff, something new, breakfast and books, they're going to be doing it the Thursday, the third Thursday of every month and I'm going to go next month and anybody who wants to go can go with me, it's at 8:00 a.m. and you just read to the children and then I walked around and looked at their teachers with their reading program, observed a top-notch first-grade teacher, by the way, who is doing just wonderful things and yes, they're studying phonics and they seem to be enjoying themselves. And I guess I want to close with something hopeful and positive and all that. The day after Christmas, I had several former students come by to say hello and eat my leftovers and one of them really stood out and she was my last year of teaching at Napa High, she got a scholarship to Vassar and from there, she got a scholarship to Emory and she's in a PhD program for neurobiology. And she, I asked how her siblings were doing and her brother had graduated from Sac State with an engineering degree and her sister is a student at UC Berkeley, go Bears, and her father is a farm worker and is completely bemused and delighted at his children's success. And you know something? One of the reasons I always stay hopeful is because I had the luxury of teaching older students, you know, where, and, you know, I'm telling you, I think we're doing the job. I'm really proud of my students. Yessenia Garcia, thank you for coming to see me. And that's my report. Next on the agenda is, whoops, board representative report, sorry, oh yeah, I have to turn it over. Gosh. Great, special ed, Community Advisory Committee, Lisa Chu.
They have not met.
Okay, City of American Canyon liaison reps.
We have not met.
Okay, City of Napa liaison reps.
We have not met.
Okay, Town of Yountville.
We have not met.
Okay, well, it was Christmas time. Okay, now we have holidays. Superintendent and executive staff reports.
Great, thank you, President Water. So good evening NVUSD trustees and community, happy 2024 to everyone and welcome back. I'd like to start my report by thanking the Freed Family Fund donor at the Napa Valley Community Foundation for their recent donation of $1,000 towards the district's initiatives related to environmental science and school gardening programs. We appreciate your generosity. Tonight, I would also like to take a moment to thank all of the students, staff and community members who have participated in our second phase of community engagement in our strategic visioning and planning process that's been mentioned by several of the trustees. Approximately 400 individuals have completed the survey to date, providing a substantial input on the draft elements of the graduate, adult and system portraits. In addition, I want to thank Maely McConnell, a student at Unidos Middle School and a member of our Strategic Visioning Guiding Coalition. Tomorrow, Maely will lead an input session at Unidos Middle School with all 7th and 8th graders at the school and we love this because one of our greatest sources of pride within the process is the high degree of student involvement up until now and that will continue through June. The student involvement ensures that we are open to and inclusive of student voice and influence on our district's vision for the future. Tomorrow's the last day for completing the survey, so any last submitters out there, we ask that you take some time to give us your input before the deadline. All of this input gathered through the survey during the second phase of community engagement will inform the last working session of our guiding coalition which is scheduled for February 9th and 10th. And lastly, please mark your calendars for Saturday, March 16th, which is the date for our community installation event here at the Ed Center where we will unveil the near final drafts of the portraits. This will be the community's final opportunity for feedback as well, so there is a lot going on with this year-long process, keep your calendars marked for all of this exciting work. And thanks again to Julie Bordes and the members of our core team that are leading this work internally within the district. I also want to take a moment to thank Principal Brian Gardner from Sheer K-8 School for a fantastic visit at Sheer last week. It was great to hear about the work he and his team have been leading around the K-8 expansion of the school. I also got to participate in some dance lessons with 4th graders in PE class, so that was fun, I think they thought I had some good moves. We also discussed the initial implementation of the Community Schools Initiative which is supporting students at Sheer with the wraparound services that they need to be more successful in school. The most exciting part of the visit though was the discussion we had about the launch of the Magnet Grant Program that he's been working on with Janine Burt, our Magnet Grant Coordinator. It was so exciting to hear about the preliminary ideas about launching the World of Work Framework and Program and their innovative ideas about implementing a K through 8 career readiness model at the school. So it's going to be an exciting few years ahead at Sheer School and I know that's a special place in your heart, has a special place in your heart, President Water. Yes, you are the neighbor there. I was also grateful to join the secondary leadership team.
The executive team. And then I'm just going to close this little bit of a somber note, but I'm going to follow the pattern here of saying something that we need to work on and then being hopeful and optimistic and aspirational about it. So Monday, January 18th, will mark National Gun Violence Awareness Week. It normally is the first week of February, and the time that the week is commemorated is related to how quickly our country reaches the number of gun deaths that match the annual rates of gun deaths in our peer nations across the world. So it used to be the first week of February, and now it is the week of January 18th because of the escalation in gun violence in our country. So that is a sad note, but I will say I'm proud of our district for the steps that we've taken, both to address the mental health and wellness of our students and larger community, and also specifically the steps that we've taken to educate our community about the now city-required safe storage of firearms. But I will challenge us as an organization to look for ways that we can have even a larger impact for this public health crisis, because I think that there's even more that we can do to educate people about and to prevent further gun violence. So on that note, I will conclude my report.
Thank you, Trustee Reiser. All right. Well, on December 15th, Trustee Reiser and I went to the Carpenter's Lunch in San Francisco, right? Where we had a nice lunch, but we also met quite a lot of people who can help our students in career and technical education. So I was really happy we went. And let's see, on the 7th, January 7th, I went to the DeYoung Museum to see one of our teachers, our art teachers, Belair Terry Charney, had a painting at the big, you know, Bay Area County Artists Exhibition. Yes, your sister, she had a painting there, too. And one of Terry's pictures was selected to be a postcard. It was, you know, it's a big deal. So that was great. And I saw a couple of other friends of mine who had, whose pictures were chosen, people in San Francisco. And then also, on the 8th, I attended the, I went to the Phase 2, you know, readiness. And I've filled out a million online services, surveys lately. And let's see, on, I believe it was on the 10th also, yep, the staff engagement that was online event that I, thank you, that was great. On the 9th, I attended in-person the NCOE meeting. On the 14th, I met some local environmentalists and told them about, we discussed the reduction of plastic in the lunches. Thank you, you know, for the effort there. Let's see, a couple of days before that, I went to see Mrs. Housley's Ethnic Studies class at Vintage High School, you know, very delightful group of ninth graders. The same day, I went to, Dr. David Brown, our former superintendent died, and several of us went to the visitation at Tulakee. And he was a great person, and he was ahead of the curve in opposing book banning. I've got a story about that. He, I'll always remember him. He was a big help to me. And on the 15th, I went to a meeting of our Students for Climate Action Group. On the 17th, which was only yesterday, I went to Sacramento again, to the Governor's Budget Meeting. Yesterday, I met with Superintendent Masetti. Today, I went to Phillips Elementary. They had, they had a kickoff, something new, breakfast and books. They're going to be doing it the Thursday, the third Thursday of every month, and I'm going to go next month, and anybody who wants to go can go with me. It's at 8:00 a.m., and you just read to the children. And then I walked around and looked at their teachers with their reading program, observed a top-notch first-grade teacher, by the way, who is doing just wonderful things. And yes, they're studying phonics, and they seem to be enjoying themselves. And I guess I want to close with something hopeful and positive and all that. The day after Christmas, I had several former students come by to say hello and eat my leftovers. And one of them really stood out, and she was my last year of teaching at Napa High. She got a scholarship to Vassar, and from there, she got a scholarship to Emory, and she's in a PhD program for neurobiology. And she, I asked how her siblings were doing, and her brother had graduated from Sac State with an engineering degree, and her sister is a student at UC Berkeley, go Bears. And her father is a farm worker and is completely bemused and delighted at his children's success. And you know something? One of the reasons I always stay hopeful is because I had the luxury of teaching older students, you know, where, and, you know, I'm telling you, I think we're doing the job. I'm really proud of my students. Yusania Garcia, thank you for coming to see me. And that's my report. Next on the agenda is, whoops, Board Representative Report, sorry. Oh, yeah, I have to turn it over. Gosh. Great, Special Ed, Community Advisory Committee, Lisa Chu.
They have not met.
Okay, City of American Canyon liaison reps.
We have not met.
Okay, City of Napa liaison reps.
We have not met.
Okay, Town of Yountville.
We have not met.
Okay, well, it was Christmas time. Okay, now we have holidays. Superintendent and Executive Staff Reports.
Great, thank you, President Water. So good evening, NVUSD trustees and community. Happy 2024 to everyone, and welcome back. I'd like to start my report by thanking the Freed Family Fund donor at the Napa Valley Community Foundation for their recent donation of $1,000 towards the district's initiatives related to environmental science and school gardening programs. We appreciate your generosity. Tonight, I would also like to take a moment to thank all of the students, staff, and community members who have participated in our second phase of community engagement in our strategic visioning and planning process that's been mentioned by several of the trustees. Approximately 400 individuals have completed the survey to date, providing a substantial input on the draft elements of the graduate, adult, and system portraits. In addition, I want to thank Maely McConnell, a student at Unidos Middle School and a member of our Strategic Visioning Guiding Coalition. Tomorrow, Maely will lead an input session at Unidos Middle School with all 7th and 8th graders at the school. And we love this, because one of our greatest sources of pride within the process is the high degree of student involvement up until now, and that will continue through June. The student involvement ensures that we are open to and inclusive of student voice and influence on our district's vision for the future. Tomorrow's the last day for completing the survey, so any last submitters out there, we ask that you take, take some time to give us your input before the deadline. All of this input gathered through the survey during the second phase of community engagement will inform the last working session of our guiding coalition, which is scheduled for February 9th and 10th. And lastly, please mark your calendars for Saturday, March 16th, which is the date for our community installation event here at the Ed Center, where we will unveil the near final drafts of the portraits. This will be the community's final opportunity for feedback as well, so there is a lot going on with this year-long process. Keep your calendars marked for all of this exciting work. And thanks again to Julie Bordes and the members of our core team that are leading this work internally within the district. I also want to take a moment to thank Principal Brian Gardner from Sheer K-8 School for a fantastic visit at Sheer last week. It was great to hear about the work he and his team have been leading around the K-8 expansion of the school. I also got to participate in some dance lessons with 4th graders in PE class, so that was fun. I think they thought I had some good moves. We also discussed the initial implementation of the Community Schools Initiative, which is supporting students at Sheer with the wraparound services that they need to be more successful in school. The most exciting part of the visit, though, was the discussion we had about the launch of the Magnet Grant Program that he's been working on with Janine Burt, our Magnet Grant Coordinator. It was so exciting to hear about the preliminary ideas about launching the World of Work Framework and Program, and their innovative ideas about implementing a K through 8 career readiness model at the school. So it's going to be an exciting few years ahead at Sheer School. And I know that's a special place in your heart, has a special place in your heart, President Water. Yes, you are the neighbor there. I was also grateful to join the secondary leadership team that Student Board Representative McGrath was talking about, the learning walks. I was grateful to join the secondary leadership team last Thursday during learning walks of math instruction at American Canyon Middle School. Thank you to the middle school math teachers for opening up their classrooms so that we can all learn how to best support excellence in teaching and learning in mathematics. I also want to just take a moment to thank the school board members, our seven elected trustees, and our Student Board Trustee. January is School Board Recognition Month, and you definitely deserve that recognition. It's a time to salute the more than 5,000 California school district and county of office, County Office of Education Board members here in California. You are the largest group of elected officials in the state, that, and you all aid in supporting student success by establishing your local educational agency's mission, vision, policy priorities, budget, and benchmarks. And I know from working in this job the last six years with various compositions of trustees, I am so grateful to be working with such a student-centered, focused board. And I know me and the entire staff and district leadership team really appreciate your dedication towards drafting priorities, developing that vision for our district, exercising your fiduciary responsibility and budget oversight, and doing this all while you have to balance the various opinions from various stakeholder groups and constituency groups in the community while holding the educational priorities for our 16,000 students top of mind. That is very, very difficult work, and I will say, school board members should be sainted. So thank you for all that you do, and we are excited to continue to recognize you through the end of January. And as Trustee Waters mentioned, I also would just like to take a moment during tonight's Superintendent Report to honor retired NVUSD Superintendent Dr. David Brown, who served in the seat from 1994 to 2003 and who did recently pass away. I want to mention that it was an absolute pleasure meeting his beautiful family last week at the services. Dr. Brown was passionate about education, leadership, and sports, and I was also reminded by some of our visual and performing arts teachers that he was equally passionate about many of our VAPA programs here and attended. All through retirement, continued to attend many of the visual and performing art productions that we have here within the school district. He served as a superintendent actually of three districts, NVUSD was his last one of his active career before retirement. And those of you that were privileged to work with Dr. David Brown can recall what a kind and principled leader he was. Many of you also know that he loved attending NVUSD sports events. He was frequently seen at Memorial Stadium. Deep into retirement, he was a fan of our high school teams and offered lots of positive encouragement to young athletes and their coaches. And his family members told me that he even sometimes liked to argue some of the calls, so, particularly when they were not in favor of NVUSD teams. Dr. Brown personally supported me as a superintendent over the last several years. He actually would visit me a couple times of year spontaneously, and we would speak on the telephone frequently as well. He always demonstrated kindness, positivity, and hope as we discussed the amazing opportunities and complex challenges of the superintendency. I also would see him at the annual statewide Superintendent Symposium that he attended deep into retirement, because he really remained passionate and engaged around educational issues impacting K through 12 California public school systems. I had considered him a mentor and a friend over the last few years. Dr. Brown, we will miss you. We will miss the person, the leader, the superintendent, and we will honor you by continuing the positivity and student-centered mindset that you demonstrated throughout your career. I ask that we honor Dr. Brown tonight during my Superintendent Report by taking a moment Thank you, and rest in peace, Dr. Brown. With that, we will start our Executive Staff Reports. And so I'm going to begin with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Thank you. Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Representative McGrath. The HR Department is busy preparing for our annual celebration of employee excellence to be held this upcoming January 23rd in Evans Auditorium. We'll be gathering for light refreshments and photo opportunities in the hall starting at 5 o'clock, and the awards begin right at 5:30. For anyone who cannot attend in person, we have, we are live streaming the event on the NVUSD YouTube channel, but we hope you can come and be part of the festivities as we showcase some of our many outstanding employees, both classified and certificated, who work throughout the district. And although it's only January, believe it or not, we are beginning to work earnestly on staffing for next year. We are reviewing enrollment, projected and actual, reaching out to staff about their plans for next year, whether they're thinking about taking leave of absence or returning from one or deciding to retire. We're posting positions for next year and setting recruiting timelines with interviews beginning as early as February for hard-to-fill positions. It's a flurry of activity that starts now and will go right up and probably through the summer. Last but not least, please check out our latest staff spotlight on Veronica Chambles in the all-division's newsletter. Veronica is a key player in our Business Services Division. For over 16 years in her role as payroll technician, Veronica has been central for ensuring our classified employees are paid on time and accurately. She is hardworking and has an incredible eye for detail. Veronica always goes above and beyond, and we are very happy to feature her so staff throughout the district can get to know the person behind the paycheck. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson, who oversees the Operational Services Division.
Good evening, President Water, NVSD Board of Education trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Representative Finn McGrath, and members of the NVSD community. Finn, just so you know, I've never looked at myself on video, and, but I'm pressed that you do that. It's always a pleasure to provide each of you with an update of Operational Services. I want to first start with the Agricultural Science Innovation Center. I want to comment on the collaborative effort recently demonstrated by NVSD staff, City of Napa, and local, and the Local Agency Formation Commission, or LAFCO, staff to provide city water and sewer access to the area where the new Agricultural Science Innovation Center will be built. As a reminder, LAFCO is a governmental agency designated by the California Legislature to manage local governmental boundaries, evaluate municipal services, and protect prime agricultural lands, and they take this very seriously. So when we made our request, it required a high degree of coordination amongst the multiple agencies, since there were four specific requests being made to the LAFCO commissions for approval. Two were sphere amendments, and outside water service agreement was also requested, and then annexation to the Napa Sanitation District. And fortunately, we were extremely, we were successful in having the LAFCO support this. And I would like to publicly acknowledge the following individuals for the role in support in securing the water and sewer services to support the Ag Science Innovation Center and essentially set it up for a lifetime, because, you know, if it was going to rely strictly on well water, there's no guarantee that the wells would not run dry. And I do believe that providing, tapping into the sewer service is going to, you know, is more environmentally friendly than having, you know, our own septic systems out there. So Brendan Freeman is the Executive Officer of LAFCO. Finn Smith is the Community Development Director for City of Napa. Phil Brun is the Utilities Director for the City of Napa. Tim Woods is the Senior Engineer for the City of Napa. Andrew Damron is the Assistant General Manager of the Napa Sanitation District. Our very own Monica Ready, who's our Director 3 here, Dr. Masetti, our Superintendent, who helped out, and Kelly Jurgensen, who's the Vice President of Van Pelt Construction Services. It required a lot of work between all these people to make this happen, so thank you to all of you. In December, I attended a heat-resilient landscape webinar, which was actually pretty interesting. And it was titled Protecting Student Health and Learning with Health Resilient, Heat, excuse me, Heat-Resilient Schools. And among many interesting facts, I learned that there is a 2022 Heat Extreme Action Plan that recommends that state agencies partner with school districts, youth, and community-based organizations to accelerate school greening projects in tribal and community, and climate-vulnerable communities across the state. There's a really big emphasis on socio-economically disadvantaged students. But additionally, the plan recommends promoting climate-appropriate shade tree coverage at schools, et cetera, as a part of the large urban greening goal. And the timing couldn't have been better as we go about bidding, presenting, getting our plan for the Canyon Oaks outdoor learning areas. We've done a really nice job of providing ample shade, heat-resilient surfaces, as well as plants that will really, I think, support what's already out there. So it's really, it was really good to have that, that information, and then to concur it with what's happening out there in the world of this field. And then lastly, in food service, I'm pleased to announce that Mohamed Yassin, who is our Culinary Operations Specialist, he's the individual who curated the arroz con pollo. He was selected as one of 24 school food visionaries from across the country to participate in the Chef and Foundation's Healthy School Food Pathway Fellowship. And the fellowship program is designed to cultivate school food reform leaders. During the 13-month fellowship program, fellows will deepen their knowledge about school food, how school food is influenced by and affects the wider U.S. food system, become experts on and advocates for healthy school food policy, and expand their professional work. And we're excited to have an NVSD food service staff be part of this very important fellowship, and look forward to Mohamed's capstone project that will benefit NVSD but will serve as a model for the districts nationally. So congratulations to Mohamed, and thank you. And that concludes my report.
That's great. See what happens when you cook Cuban food. You just become a winner. Congratulations, Mohamed. Thank you, Mr. Pearson, for your report. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, who oversees the Instructional Services Division.
Good evening, President Water, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Representative McGrath, and the NVUSD community. I'd like to wish everyone a happy and prosperous New Year. The Instructional Support Services Division has leaped into this leap year. Last week, district leaders and our partner ConnectEd visited high school students, staff, families on a listening and learning tour. The Listening and Learning Campaign launched Phase 2 of Board Priority Number 4, which is the innovation and alignment of career readiness programs. I want to thank Director Ready for organizing, facilitating, and coordinating this pretty massive visit last week, so I want to thank her. The purpose of Phase 2 is to identify existing strengths and challenges to building college and career readiness pathways, assess our readiness as a district, develop a shared understanding of college/career readiness pathways, and coordinate the efforts with Prospect Studios, who's doing our strategic visioning, as they identify the skills that are needed in our graduate portrait. Over the four days of the ConnectEd team visit, our team engaged in school site visits, one-on-one interviews, focus groups, and classroom observations. I had the privilege of sitting while they did a focus group with parents from our D-LAC, and they provided some real insightful information about the experiences that they've had as parents to support their students to become college and career-ready. We had an incredible opportunity to listen to over 128 people throughout our entire education system. Some of the trustees mentioned that they also were part of that interview, so we want to thank them for taking the time to provide that insight to our ConnectEd partners. However, students were the absolute highlight, as always, right? Our students shared that they have positive relations, positive relationships with their teachers, appreciated all of the extracurricular activities that we provide as a district. They felt like they have a personalized approach to learning and that they are learning in a positive school environment. They also appreciated the opportunity to develop diverse relationships, and, but they also shared that they really want more hands-on, relevant, experiential learning. Phase 2 will continue over the coming months, as ConnectEd will gather feedback from additional key partners. The district in-site staff will have the opportunity to visit high schools across California to learn more about the alignment of college and career readiness. A team recently went, actually earlier this week, and visited some high school programs and CT programs and career readiness programs in the Central Valley. You'll hear more about that in the coming weeks. And also, a NVUSD College and Career Pathway Leadership Team, composed of district leaders, site leaders, teachers, students, and community partners, will come together on February 5th. And then Phase 2 will culminate with a presentation to the school board around NVUSD's College and Career Readiness Assessment Report, Assessment Report, and a recommendation for adoption by the Board of Education later this spring. This plan will help to strengthen and develop college and career pathways in alignment with the graduate staff and system portraits that are being built through strategic visioning. We also recently launched ARI's Academic Plan page in collaboration with the Data Services Team, which allows schools to map out four-year academic plans in high school for each student to meet the graduation requirements and to track their progress. While we are going slow to go fast with this tool, our goal eventually is to enable students and parents to have the ability to submit modifications to their academic plan through the student and parent portal. The high school counseling team is incredibly excited about this new ARI's tool. At the elementary level, 3rd grade students were recently screened and assessed to determine eligibility for NVUSD's Advanced Learner Program, also known as ALPS. Families of newly identified ALPS students were notified the first week of January. Apparent information, night will be held on February 6th for these families, and will be followed up with three additional parent learning series, classes focused on supporting the academic and social-emotional needs of advanced learners. Elementary schools have a designated ALPS teacher liaison to help in the coordination of programming and ensure that there is site level, there is a site-level point of contact for families. The elementary instructional team would like to thank Dr. Peter Abud and Edgar Gutierrez for, from the data and assessment team, for their support with the administration of the COGAT, which is the cognitive ability test that's used to determine our advanced learners. It's a primary tool, but we also look at multiple measures in determining whether students qualify. We are also excited, we'll be hosting two ALPS showcases, showcases, in-person events this spring. One is going to be in American Canyon, and one will be in Napa. These showcase events will be the opportunity for ALPS students to present on selected projects to their parents and the community. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings, for that thorough report. And next and last, for Executive Staff Reports, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees the Business Services Division.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the Board and the community. On Wednesday, I attended the Governor's January Budget Proposal. As you may have heard, California has a pretty-
Okay. I'll just start from the beginning. A little inter-
Right, we, that was, we're not in closed session. That was a mistake.
A little technical difficulty. I'll blame that on your, on your left arm, Nikki. Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to update the Board and the community. On Wednesday, I attended the Governor's January Budget Proposal. As you may have heard, California has a pretty large budget problem. The Legislative Analyst Office projected a revenue shortfall of $68 billion, and the Governor's team has projected a revenue shortfall of $37.9 billion. So again, with a B, so I, we have to kind of just figure out who's right and who's wrong. Only, only time will tell, but like every year, the Governor's January Budget Proposal will change between now and the May rebis. So what is of particular importance is tax collection for 2023, which typically always occurs in April, but who knows, maybe there'll be another storm again, and we'll push it off for a couple of years. So it's, let's, let's see what happens, but again, very, very, very critical tax collection here in April. So unless the legislator suspends Prop 98, school districts are largely protected from the downswings in revenue at the state level. So the budget problem largely isn't our problem, really. It's really, it's really for other components of the budget. So just, you know, there are things that impact us, but overall, the balancing of the budget will happen somewhere else, overall. And another thing that's very important is the governor, for the most part, has, has protected the education budget. So one thing that is on the table potentially is, you know, this has happened in the past, so I'll just stress this one more time, so unless the legislator suspends Prop 98, school districts are largely protected. So the legislator has suspended Prop 98 in the past, so we'll just kind of have to wait and kind of watch closely. So revenue projections are so far off that technically speaking, school districts were given more money for the current year than they're largely due. But again, Prop 98 doesn't allow a clawback of those funds. The cost, the cost of living adjustment was the biggest change and went from 4% to less than 1%. This change to a lower COLA was reflected in our first interim budget, and so the budget team and, you know, Jenna, myself, and the team back there, we just decided to do the hard work and kind of push that through early, so that is reflected in our current budget that we have. So having a COLA of less than 1% and declining enrollment actually leads to less revenue. So given that our- that our ADA is less than the historic average of 95%, we'll need to watch attendance very, very closely. So we could see a scenario where even with a 1% COLA, we actually receive less revenues this year or next year than we did this year. So we'll have to watch that closely. And again, as you know, the biggest driver of our budget is enrollment and ADA. Enrollment in the Napa area is projected to decline very significantly in the Napa area and primarily at the secondary level. So to get even more specific, this will largely impact Napa and vintage high schools. And so this is due to a very large cohort of seniors leaving, followed by a very small freshman cohort. So if you look at the data from our enrollment projections, you'll see that the current 12th grade cohort across the Napa area is about 1,200 students, and the current 8th grade cohort is only about 800 students, or a difference of about 400 students. So you can see that in the numbers. We do pick up some students from private schools at the high school level. So the high school levels in the area won't see the full impact of 400, probably closer to 275, 300, but very significant declining enrollment at our high schools. It is projected to be like that this year and next year. The following year are two pretty heavy changes at our high schools in terms of enrollment. This concludes my report.
Great. So that concludes executive staff reports. President Water?
Thank you. And next, we have HB Facilities and Bond Program Update.
Thank you, President Water and trustees. I'd like to now introduce Kelly Jurgensen, who's the Vice President of Van Pelt Construction Services. And as a reminder, Van Pelt Construction Services serves as our bond program manager for Measure H and Measure A2. And Kelly's going to provide you with Facilities and Bond Program Update. Kelly, take it away.
All right. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me back in the new year. Thank you, President Water and trustees and Dr. Mercedes. Tonight, we're going to give a combination of updates between Measure H and A2 projects. Our project updates for tonight are going to align with Strategic Goal Number Four for the district. And I'm going to be talking about our district-wide TK work, the Agricultural Science Innovation Center. Sorry, that's a bit of a mouthful. And also, the Donaldson Way Design Build Project, the summer projects that we're going to be handling in 2024, and a quick update on our CBOC committees. All right. So for our district-wide TK work, that kind of falls into two categories for these projects. So there is a furniture component. Some of our campuses received new furniture over the winter break. That was Snow, Napa Junction, and Canyon Oaks. It was really valuable to get into those particular classrooms because we got some good feedback from the members that are in this classroom. Sorry about that. And in the summer, we're going to be doing TK classrooms at all the other elementary school sites. Another component will be the construction, which will happen in the summer of 2024. That includes new flooring, new paint, repairs to case work, and some work in the restrooms at all of the TK locations at the elementary schools. Those classrooms will get the construction work, and anyone who didn't get furniture in the winter will get furniture in the summer, and everyone will get caught up. So that's a little bit about what's going on at TK. All right. At the Agricultural Science and Innovation Center, we are in the midst of our planning phase. We just completed doing the move from the original farm site, getting that stuff organized so that it's in containers and ready to be used when the project completes. We are working with our contractor to order electrical equipment, finalizing the project documents, and working closely with Jordan and his team in technology to finalize what technology needs are going to be required at the site. As everybody knows, this project's taken a while to get to the construction phase, so we want to make sure our technology has caught up to where we're at as a district. So after that, we're going to go into next steps, which will be bidding subcontract trades. So our selected general contractor, Arntz Builders, will be working with their trade partners to get finalized bids and pricing. In the spring, we're looking to start construction, and we're also working on utility service setup, as Mike touched upon with Laco. This was a really big hurdle for us to clear. So now we can start talking about getting all those utilities set up for the site. In the picture here, you're seeing a floor plan for the Ag Science Building as well as the Culinary Science Building. So some spaces to do lab and culinary work as well as classroom work in both of those. All right. Donaldson Way had a really exciting week. We are currently working with the design-build teams to get all of their incredible ideas, budgets, and decide on what team we're going to go with. What you're looking at here is the initial adjacency plan that was put together by the team that worked with the bridging architect. That bridging architect basically gives a rough plan, and then that's given to our design-build competition attendees, and then they give us their best ideas coming out of it. We got a lot of really great creativity and bang for our buck. So we're really excited to complete that work. By the next board meeting, we're anticipating coming to all of you for approval of a contract with our selected design-build team. So we're still working on finalizing that, but very exciting stuff coming up. All right. In addition to all the things we just covered, we are tracking for the summer, working on outdoor learning areas at Canyon Oaks. At the high school in American Canyon, we will be doing an exterior painting project. You can see why in the photo I've included here in the slide. And then we're also looking at getting started with fencing projects at Vishee, Browns Valley, and West Park. The top picture you see here is a rendering giving an idea of some of the elements of the outdoor learning environments at Canyon Oaks that can be expected. We have been working very closely with our Measure A2 new CBOC members. Recently, we did a presentation regarding the sale of the bonds and the cost of issuance, and that was presented by Rob Manguala and legal counsel for the district. So they explained how the bonds are sold and how those costs are incurred, and what's the money that we get at the end of that bond sale. And it was a really robust discussion. So we just wanted to share a little bit of the work we're doing with the A2 committee. And then we continue to have our Measure H CBOC committee. In fact, tonight, we're going to be proposing two new memberships for the board to vote on. In the past, we've been working with them on making sure that Measure H really met some of the key criteria that CalBOC suggests for successful CBOC committees and bond measures. And we were really meeting all of these boxes. So the image you see here is the CalBOC suggested checklist, and we worked through that with the committee, making sure that we met all those requirements, and we did. So that was a little bit of nice work we did there as we wrap up the Measure H bond. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Kelly.
And I'm sorry if you heard my cat.
Thank you, Kelly. Just one thing to mention also to the trustees is that we will be having an annual report be brought forward, probably either April or May. I need to speak to Dr. Mercedes on when that would happen, but both for the Measure A2 and the Measure H on their annual report. But the Measure A2 will not be a very big report for obvious reasons, since they won't have much report out of their fiscal year. I think they have one month, basically, to report out. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's a very exciting report, frankly. I'm, you know, thrilled. All right. We'll move to I on the agenda, Approval of Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of items, of an item or items, is requested by a board member or board members.
All right. I would like to pull items I-2B and I-5A. Otherwise, move to approve.
I-2B and I-5A.
I'll second.
Hmm?
I'll second.
Okay, second. And do we have a?
Our first and a second.
We have a first and a second and --
Trustee Gracia and Chu.
Trustee Gracia and Chu, and then roll call vote.
Correct.
Okay, roll call vote.
And then you deal with the other.
Right.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry. I made a mistake. I should have asked, I should have asked if we had any public comment on this.
We do not have any public comment on this item.
I'm relieved. Thank you. Now, we are going to have a discussion on, let's see.
I-2B.
I-2B. Renewal Memorandum of Understanding with Napa County Office of Education. Okay.
So I don't understand why we would continue to subsidize NCOE's access to a lobbyist. At this point, I'm not seeing what our common interests are that are supposedly being served by this contract. We don't need to piggyback on the county's contract to obtain our own lobbying services. We have our own contract with capital advisors. I clearly value the word "capital advisors" does, as NVSD has two contracts with capital advisors for our own use. If the county needs to do advocacy, then the county office should pay for the contract to do their own job. If $12,000 is the difference between NCOE having the contract or not, then it indicates to me the county doesn't really value their relationship with capital advisors, and makes me wonder what they are using this contract for. I do not feel compelled to subsidize the county office of education at the expense of supporting our own students. If the county wants a relationship with capital advisors, they can fund it themselves.
I would, David said, trustee Gracia, pardon me, said everything that I would like to say, but it is duplicative in nature, and I do agree, it is not necessary.
Thank you, trustees Gracia and Jankowicz. Are there any other comments on this? No? Okay, so do, so let's see. I guess we need a motion. All in favor?
There's no motion.
There is no motion.
I mean, okay, so nobody wants to, no, is there anyone who wants to make a motion in favor of this?
So we can move forward. I will make a motion.
Okay. Do we have?
I will second.
We have a second. And, okay, the motion is made by trustee Hart, the second made by trustee Chu. And I guess we'll have a roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Are we voting in favor or against the item?
It's up to you.
Well, no, like.
There was a motion.
There was a motion.
Each the item where, so we haven't even voted on the original.
Actually, trustee Hart.
Item.
So you have to make a motion in order to have a vote. So I made a motion to approve.
To approve.
And then now we can have the opportunity to either approve or disapprove.
So are we going to vote it up or vote it down, is the question?
So a yes is an approval of the contract, and no is disapprove.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
We've never done this before, you know, actually. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. No.
Great. So trustee McGrath says no, and?
Go ahead. Ms. Morales, go ahead with the roll call.
Trustee Water?
No.
Trustee Riser?
No.
Trustee Chu?
No.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
No.
Trustee Hart?
No.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
No.
The motion does not pass.
Thank you.
President Water, I just want to take a moment. So Assistant Superintendent Manguala, I'm going to ask that you relay that information to the Napa County Office of Education on behalf of the school board.
I will take that direction. Thank you, Dr. Mercedes.
Thank you.
All right. And next, we have 5A, Operational Services, 5A, FMO 10.01.2024, Maintenance Department Contracts.
So I pull this item because I believe that we can do better in the future by including a complete contract with all of the relevant terms, like the price of the contract. I hope to see more transparency when these items return to the board in the future. With that, I will move to approve.
Okay. We've got a motion from trustee Gracia. Is there a second?
I'll second, and I agree.
Okay. Second from trustee Jankowicz.
Chu.
Chu, sorry. I thought it was Jankowicz. Sorry. I think I'm getting deaf. All right. Okay, so roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
No.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Next, we are on J, Item J, Presentations and Discussion Items. Instructional Services, 1A, Introduction of Supplementary Instructional Material Adoption for High School.
Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member McGrath and Dr. Mercedes. On behalf of the NVSD Curriculum Council, I would like to introduce Different Mirrors for Young People, a history of multicultural America for our PUS history classes at our high school as a supplemental resource. This resource provides multiple perspectives on key historical moments that align to our core materials and meet the California History Social Science standards. I want to thank Board Member McGrath for highlighting the need tonight to better support our multilingual learners in our core classes, and think it's timely. I would like to highlight that this particular supplemental materials, we've seen an increase in the number of multilingual learners that we're excited to welcome into our schools over the past year and couple of years. And so this resource will provide our students, particularly our multilingual learners and our students with IEPs, the opportunity to engage in core curriculum with reading content that's aligned while also appropriate to their reading level, so giving them access while also keeping them included in core classes. So this is an introductory item for tonight.
It has very good reviews, and I did order a copy of the book. Okay, that's great.
Excellent reviews.
Okay, we'll move on.
Yep.
All righty.
Just for introductions.
Okay. And should we take a break now before action items?
Thank you. Can finish.
Okay. Action item, Business Services, Annual Audit Report 2022-23.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Trustee, wait, do we have any, do we have any public discussion, public comment on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Okay. Trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Okay, we need a roll call vote.
No roll call.
No roll call vote. No, not for this one. I'm sorry. Okay, great. Well, let's, trustee McGrath says yes, and the rest of us?
Aye.
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 Adoption of Spending-One-Time Funds Plan.
Move to second.
Okay. A first from Gracia, a second from whom?
Chu.
Chu, again. Trustee Gracia, let somebody else make a motion, okay, next time. Let's live dangerously. Do we have any, do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
No public comments. Okay. Trustee McGrath, student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Two, Human Resources, A, UCMS Ed Student/Teacher Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A first from David Gracia, even though I told him not to, and a second from trustee Chu. Do we have any public comment on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Public comment, okay. And student trustee, student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, and three. And three, Instructional Services Resolution 2407, Renewal of Cooperative Work Agreement with the California Department of Rehabilitation. And this will be a roll call vote.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A first from Trustee Gracia and a second from two people?
From Hart.
From Hart. Okay. And do we have any, do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
No public comments. Thank you. Okay. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member McGrath?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
You're welcome. 2023 School Accountability, School Accountability Report Cards, SARC, published in 2023, 2024. And a, a? Motion?
Do we?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Who was first?
Juliana was first.
Juliana was first. Congratulations. And Trustee Gracia was second. Do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. And student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. C, Revised Board Policy and Regulation 6174, Education for English Learners.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A first from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart. Do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. And student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. New high, D, New High School Courses of Study.
Move to approve.
Okay. Trustee Hart moves, is made the motion, and Trustee Gracia seconded. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. And student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Supplementary Instructional Material Adoption for Elementary Schools?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A first from Trustee Gracia and a second from Trustee Hart.
A little discussion before we vote, if you don't mind.
Let us discuss it. Thank you.
So I just wanted to say that I look forward to the future form that we will use on these items and hope that we will have a better rubric than the one that is presently available that references the best that people have ever seen. So I'm looking forward to that changing in the future.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And are there any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. And student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Am I on F, Supplementary Instructional Material Adoption for Elementary Schools?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. I've got a motion from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Hart, I think. And do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And G, Agreement with Billy Donigan?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Trustee Gracia, a second by Trustee Hart. Are there any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
No public comment on this item. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Agreement with TFS results?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Trustee Gracia, a second by Trustee Hart. Are there any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. And student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ratification of Contract with the Nova Center for Education?
Move to approve.
Second.
I need a second?
Second.
Oh, is that Hart? Okay, great. Okay, motion by Gracia, trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. And student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ratification of Contract with CIO Autism Therapy LLC?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion made by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michael, is there any public comment on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee McGrath?
Aye.
All in favor?